Welcome to the Local Exchange Podcast where Northwest Ohio comes to talk. Real people, real conversations, right here in our community. This episode is proudly brought to you by Caliber Custom Clothe Ears. Defining style beyond ordinary. All right, well, it is good to be back in studio, Matt. I missed Triplett, did not get to be there for that. And then you, then you had to get me in a hotel room for the last podcast. But now I am back in studio and we are joined by Todd Washam. Todd, welcome to the Local Exchange Podcast.
Thank you very much. Hey, and you were in Austin for one of the podcasts of Not a Bad Trade when it was cold here.
Uh, yeah, it was, it was nice down there. I don't really enjoy the whole world when I'm down there working. It's normally just meetings and getting down to things, but I got some barbecue when I was down there, so.
I was in Florida, uh, Friday through Tuesday for meetings, so.
Okay.
It's hard traveling, but when you're at a beach place for work, it's not the worst thing in the world.
There's worse places to be.
Yeah.
The, the tough part about me is like being away from the family and the kids and all that. It just gets to be rough, so.
It's hard.
Now, did you get all your shopping done already this morning, Black Friday? No.
No. I was making Spam, toast, pancakes. That's what we were doing this morning.
Spam, toast, pancakes?
Oh, yeah.
Is this like a, a, a Black Friday tradition over there?
No, my kids love Spam.
Okay.
And I love it and it's easier than bacon.
No, I, I gotta admit, I don't think I've ever purchased a can of Spam before. Okay.
I hate it.
I love.
Shockingly, I hate it, but.
Yeah, nice and crispy, makes a good sandwich, too.
Now, Matt was talking yesterday, Matt was talking recently and said he hates Thanksgiving. Uh, not a big fan of turkey. Uh, are you, are you a Thanksgiving hater as well?
No, I'm, I'm fine with everything except praying berries.
There's some alligator, I didn't say I hated Thanksgiving. I said I hated turkey.
Thing in the world.
Right, turkey might be the single worst food.
Okay, it goes well with gravy, so if you love gravy.
And like, let me, let me clarify, because I got some, I got some hate. So this is a good chance for me to clear the record.
Good.
Turkey deli meat, fine.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not suggesting nobody ever eats turkey when they go to Subway or when they go to the deli. That's fine, get your turkey, my wife loves turkey. I'm suggesting, all of you that talk about how great a 30-pound turkey is, are probably being disingenuous because you don't go through the effort to make it.
So as long as it's processed up with salt and nitric acid or something.
I'm not saying one's better than the other. I don't eat, I don't eat that turkey.
But a freshly cooked turkey.
I don't eat that turkey either, but like ham, I make a ham throughout the entire year. I'll, I'll have ham on Christmas, Easter, randomly in July. I make a, a big ham all the time. Nobody ever makes a turkey except for Thanksgiving.
Now, there is one thing that we get to do that we don't get to do all the time, and that is talk to Todd Washam. Todd, I would, I would prefer to learn a little bit about you. Let's first off, tell the guests out there, no, no township drama going on here. You are a member of the Shawnee School Board.
Shawnee School Board.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, Todd.
Well, born and raised in Lima, I went to LCC, graduated '01. Moved away pretty much in 2004 for an internship out in DC. And then after graduation, moved out there and was out there for almost 20 years.
20 years in DC?
Yeah, moved back three years ago with, uh, me and my kids moved back. Me and the kids and the dogs, so we're back here and kids are getting ready to start school. And my sister and brother put all their kids through Shawnee. So, you know, I had been thinking about going back to Catholic schools, but seeing how well the nieces, nieces and nephew did at Shawnee. Got the kids into Shawnee, so hurried up and bought a house out there right before my son started kindergarten.
There you go.
So they're young, how old, how old are they?
Five and seven.
Okay.
Yeah, so my daughter's now in kindergarten out there, loves it. Uh, my son's in second grade, thriving out there. And, yeah, my sis, I was complaining about a couple of things a couple of years ago. And at one of the football games and my sister said, "Well, you know, there's an opening on the school board and you don't even have to run, you just have to get on, on the, uh, write-in ballot." I said, "Oh, well, I'm gonna go look at this." So I went and became one of the declared write-in candidates. And it was me and Jerome O'Neal were the only two for those two seats, so.
Okay.
I called the election, uh, commission, I said, "How many votes do I have to get?" He said, "It was Keith Chaney, said, "If you can spell your name right, you win." I said, "All right." So I needed one vote, I ended up getting 100 or 130, something like that.
Congratulations on winning that out. Now, when you were in DC, DC, were you in, uh, politics out there?
Yeah, I worked on Capitol Hill for, uh, my first job was Congressman Henry Hyde. He was from Illinois, Chicago area, his chief of staff was from Lima.
Okay.
His name's Tom Mooney, he owned Murphy's on Main Street here in Lima. He owns Murphy's out in Alexandria. So I wrote him a letter, asked him if I'd come intern for him. And he wrote one back and said, "You can start on March 4th."
Okay.
So that's what I did. And second boss was Congressman Jim Sensenbrenner out of Wisconsin. And I lobbied for, a little bit for the air conditioning industry. Uh, it was the contractors like Washam Plumbing and Heating, um, some of the other contractors in here. It was that association. Then I worked in the Trump administration for a year doing congressional affairs at Environmental Protection Agency. And then ended up back in Ohio.
Okay, so, so small-town school board, not really, uh, gonna make you too nervous. You, you've got a lot of experience, uh, at a higher level.
I don't know, it can probably be pretty contentious, is it?
It can be contentious.
You live with these people, which is a little bit different.
Yes.
Your kids are now involved in the school system, so you're in it now.
Yes, it, it's different for sure. Their local politics, people care a lot more because it impacts them every day. And schools is no different. From nationally, you see, uh, boys and girls and shared bathrooms, guns in the schools. All of these things that can be really scary to people, we have to deal with. Uh, and when you vote on that, we're a very open school board. People know pretty quickly what you're doing and how people think about things. But the, the hard part is understanding education policy. I, I worked on energy issues, transportation issues out in Congress. So learning education policy, the science of reading, to, uh, state standardized testing, why all of these things are important, you gotta get up to speed real quick. So, uh, since Don has been on, uh, with Shawnee as our superintendent, I have had a good mentor in learning about the education side of things. Yeah, but how a board runs, how a committee runs, that's pretty much second nature now.
Okay, so you've been on the board for two years now?
Yes.
Okay.
And president already.
No, vice president.
Vice president, okay.
I, I, I gave him a title that he has not, not yet earned. Maybe one day down the road, but, so, uh, there's, how many people are on the school board?
There are five.
Okay, and so what does the school board, like, if you were just gonna give a 30-second, what does the school board do?
We set the budget, we, uh, we set the policies for curriculum. We hire superintendent, we hire treasurer, we approve the superintendent's nominee, or, uh, decisions for who he and the principals want to hire at the schools. We have to approve all of the volunteers. Right now, the big thing is reading improvement plans and figuring out how the educators, the parents, the students, the superintendent, all, and our state policies, how all of that has to come together and, uh, move forward. So our kids are doing what we're, what we expect of them and what our teachers are, uh, are doing and all that. So that's, that's the 30-second thing. But budget appropriations, making sure money is spent correctly is one of the most important things.
So, a lot of very important things that you do in there.
There are some, so there was, um, Marlena was just on the ballot. And I assume one because there was nobody else on the ballot. Are there any open seats still? Were they all filled?
We have two, so there were, there were three open seats. Marlena, her ballot was approved. There were a few people whose ballots were not approved. Maybe it was a printing error when they had to print out their ballot and take it in. It could have been signatures that were not valid, I'm not sure. But we have two open seats, so it'll be me, Jerome and Marlena. In January, we have to appoint two people to the board. If we can't do it, then one of the local judges will appoint people for us.
And so you as in, like, you three sitting in that room have to appoint someone?
Yes.
So how do you go through, what's that process like?
We have five, I think, five people so far that have submitted letters of interest. And we will interview them and then we vote on them.
Hey, just to be clear, Matt did vote for me for, for school board, so I do have one vote at least?
You were not a declared write-in candidate, unfortunately.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm starting to catch wind. Uh, anything you can say to get me off of the board, I understand, I'll stick with the podcast. Now, are you, are you still involved in, uh, your coaching career at all?
No, once my daughter, my daughter wanted to play soccer with, uh, my son Joey. And, but she wanted to hold my hand the entire time while she's on the field. So that was, that was challenging to have her try to play. She was, she's pretty good, but she was shy out there.
Okay.
And I didn't want her to be on the sidelines by herself, so I stopped coaching soccer. I still helped out with baseball, um, when I was asked to.
Now, what about field hockey or, uh, roller hockey?
I gave up on all of that.
See, one thing you may not remember is one of the players on the Hockey Honeys.
Yeah.
Stephanie Carey, who is now Stephanie Keskey. And, uh, she, she found a picture of the Hockey Honeys from 2000.
Uh, the tie dye, I love it. There's Rachel, there's Simmy. Um, let's see, we've got a garlock, yep.
Yeah.
And my jalapeno hat. So I think your wife's dad paid for those shirts for us.
Wouldn't, wouldn't surprise me.
And I think he brought Q Bs for one of the snacks after a game one time.
Okay.
Mr. Carey was awesome.
Yeah.
Well, it's a healthy snack, like, you know, a Q B.
We were the Hockey Honeys.
Yeah, the Hockey Honeys, Matt, I mean, check that out, it, just a beautiful look right there.
That's peak 2000 apparel.
I, I hope you will send me that picture, please.
Oh, I'm not, we'll, we'll post this on the podcast, I'll send it to you, absolutely. The Hockey Honeys will be back for you, but.
I taught Rachel Simonell everything she knows about coaching just from that year.
Okay.
That's why she was such a great basketball coach.
Okay, and she's the, uh, gym teacher over there at the middle school now, right?
I think so.
Okay.
That sounds right.
That is the case, but anyway, yeah, she's, she's awesome. My wife played volleyball with her, uh, from time to time, so.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, um, so out of all the things that the school board does, what do you think is the biggest responsibility that you guys have for the taxpayers and the families of the school?
The biggest is making sure the kids are being educated, um, to the, according to the curriculum that the state passes and making sure if anyone's falling behind, we know why and how we address that. So education, biggest thing.
Okay, now, I, I went to, uh, the last school board meeting and so I kinda wanted to just talk about some of the things that came up during that. Um, first off, the Veterans Day event that Chad Spencer and Haley Griffo were involved with. Um, did you attend that? Did you get to see that at all?
I didn't, we had, I work at, uh, for Synovus.
Okay.
And I, I work at multiple sites. And we had Frank LaRose, our Secretary of State, in for a tour that day.
Okay.
So he was in town for a veterans event and he wanted to see the refinery. So we had some veterans show him the refinery and what we do out there to provide military jet fuel, diesel, things that the military uses and tie all that in for him. So I had to be part of that tour.
Well, that's fair.
Got to be part of it, but I was sad to miss what Shawnee did.
Well, yeah, because they, I heard there was over 100 veterans there. And I mean, I can imagine the kind of story and, uh, job that Spencer did with that.
Yeah.
Um, and now, was that the first time an event like that had happened at Shawnee? Okay.
We do the ones at the football games, there've been a couple of smaller ones, uh, cookies with the veterans, something like that. And, uh, but this was the, the biggest one, so I'm looking forward to us keep doing that.
Okay, the, the other thing that I learned during that meeting was that this is Shawnee's 100th school year? That we're gonna be going into next year?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there, there any big plans for like the 100th year?
It's in the works. Don is working on some things, Don Digley, our superintendent. And then there is the Shawnee Foundation, Shawnee School Foundation. So there's a, an outside group that's also working on some things. I know Butch Kirk is part of a group that's working on that. So trying to figure out how everybody is working on this together. And if you heard me at the board meeting, talk about getting a handle on our communications.
Mm-hmm.
Internal and external at the school. This is one of the reasons why, because I don't always know what outside groups who wanna, who are supporting Shawnee and do a great job are doing. And then internally, we've gotta figure out how everyone's talking together, working together.
That seems like a big, um, as somebody that has kids that play in different sports and I know different coaches, it seems like every time I think, oh, okay, I understand that there's a boosters, but then there's also a boosters for the basketball team, which is separate than the regular boosters and the football team and the baseball team. And every organization seems to have their own fundraising, uh, donations that they're making. As a member of the school board, is it helpful to have a bunch of different organizations all sort of handling a very limited scope? Or is it, in your opinion, would it be better if everything went into one pool of money and then was sent out as, as deemed appropriate by the school board?
I don't know yet. That's one of the reasons I wanna get a better understanding of how all of this is working together or could be done better. I think the boosters has football, basketball, all of that in it. But then each sport has their own association. The Football Parents Association is not part of the boosters program. How do we get all this working together? It's, it's gonna be hard.
Well, especially when you start adding in, like, as you go younger in age group, you have different organizations that are using different sports fields. And whereas, how much money are they bringing in? Um, you know, like, um, does, it's basketball season right now. And hopefully Shawnee shows up tonight and wins tonight.
Got the tip off tonight.
Right, uh, like, the Little Indians Basketball Association, is that a part of the school? Does the school oversee that? Is that a side organization? And you could say the same about, like, when baseball's put on in the spring. Is that a school function versus an organization that runs it and the school just loans them the field?
I think they have to rent the fields and then that money goes back to the athletic department. And Steve Owen, oh my God, he's amazing. He shows up at everything, he's patient. We've only got one Steve Owen. Um, so I don't know how he keeps track of all of this. I want to make sure that the questions you have, those are the same questions I have. After two years on the board, this is what I'm starting to look at now and trying to figure all of this out. And I know a lot of the parents associations, they have to register. And they do that with Criss Cross, our treasurer. And so their fund is registered, if they're a 501(c)(3). There's some relationship with the school. But I don't know if there are legal, um, responsibilities on both sides. I don't know that yet.
Yeah.
And that was one of the questions I asked Chris. And she agreed, this is something we're gonna keep looking into and figure out. Just how to make sure everything's being coordinated. I look, I don't have social media, I've only got Twitter or X. But when I look at, try to follow the football scores during our games that I can't go to, pull up Shawnee Football, there were multiple pages, Shawnee Volleyball, there were multiple pages. Some haven't been active for 10 years.
Right.
So was this just a parent, a coach that created a Twitter page? Or they're on Facebook and now they're defunct, there's a Shawnee fandom that posts stuff?
Yep.
Then our own Shawnee School pages, so it's, there's a lot out there. I'd like to have it more coordinated.
Right, and there's a lot of moving pieces, it seems like.
Now, there is a nice app, it's called Score Stream, I think. And that, that takes care of, uh, high school sports, local stuff. So you can follow like LCC, you can follow Shawnee, specifically, uh, sports within, uh, those schools.
Score Stream.
You can get alerts and things like that. And it's just, it's dependent on people to update the scores while they're there, but it's better than nothing.
It's better than nothing.
It's decent, uh, let's put it that way. Uh, but yeah, I'm sure a lot of that stuff that you're seeing is just, hey, I'm gonna start up this page and then,
Yeah.
okay, I'm not interested in doing it anymore. They don't think about deleting it or anything like that.
Mm-hmm.
Now, uh, one thing I did appreciate when I was at the, at that meeting was there seemed to be, I could definitely tell that, like, you were really putting a lot of thought into questions that were coming from the audience. Um, and it, it, it was very interactive from the board to the people sitting in that room. Uh, that was a refreshing thing to see. Now, pro tip, if you're going to your first board meeting and you want to hear what is being said, I recommend you not sit towards the back of the room. Uh, kind of a chatty back row back there, uh, you know? I, I know they're great people, but you would think, uh, teachers who don't like kids talking while they're up there doing lessons would probably maybe have the same, same thought when they're in a boardroom. They don't wanna talk while other people are talking. A little distracting, chatty, chatty back row.
Well, we have a lot of strong opinions on calendars and reading improvement plans, so I can imagine.
Where, where are these, where are these meetings at?
In the middle school, what is it though? I don't know if it's technically the first floor or the first and a half floor.
Walk up, walk up the, walk up the staircase on the right side of the middle school and then turn left. And it's just one of those, uh, room at the end of the hall on the left.
Oh, okay.
So, um, anyway, so you, you talk about that and one of the things was the, the calendar. So we were talking about when the school year starts next year and when it ends next year. It sounds like you guys put out a few options. Who was that presented to, kinda go over what you're dealing with there?
There's a calendar committee from teachers and administrators. They put together three options for us and each option has three years of the next three school year. So, uh, nine calendars in front of us. And we had the fair students, the kids who participated at the fair, if they show their horses and cows and sheep, they don't wanna start until after the fair.
Mm-hmm.
And at the previous board meeting, was that back in October? A number of the students and parents stood up and most of the board said publicly, "Yeah, we're, we will not support a calendar that starts during the fair. We will help these students." And so one of the calendars presented to us always started during the fair. So that's probably a non-starter. And I didn't like that we were going one day after Memorial Day, sometimes two. Nothing happens for the kids those days.
Sure.
Why are we doing that? Why are the kids going back one day after Memorial Day? We all know, we've got young kids, they're in there, probably helping clean, put stuff away. My sister, my mom, my sister-in-law, brother, they're all teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was in my mom's class back at Whittier sometimes on the last day of school. It's just kind of a party.
Yep.
So let's make sure we're going, the students are there, being educated on the days they're at school. So that last day of school after Memorial Day really bothers me. I don't like that our kids don't get a spring break.
Mm-hmm.
We've got one day on either side of Easter sometimes. And this year, as great as it was to have our kids off during Thanksgiving, was that really necessary? Because we're gonna have a two-week break in three weeks while we have a whole week off. And I wanna figure that out. How do we have full spring break? How do we start after the fair? How do we get out before Memorial Day and still have a good chunk of Christmas break? And meet the, our state requirements for 1,001 hours of education? And then the teachers have to be paid 182 or 183 days. So my message to Don and Dylan Johnberger was, let's be a little more creative. Let's not look at what other schools are doing. Figure out something, just be creative, do something that other people haven't done. And one suggestion I've had is a lot of teachers go to school in August and set up their classrooms. And the principals are usually there. What if the principal has some professional development during the days teachers are there setting up their classrooms? Let's count that as one of their paid workdays. I don't know if that can be done, but let's explore. Cause that's, that could be two or three extra days.
Yeah, just think outside the box a little bit.
As somebody that stays home, because I work from home, have you ever considered the year-round school plan?
I remember hearing about that when.
And some states do it, um.
There's kids screaming at you right now.
Wouldn't be the first time. And it's not like you go five days a week throughout the year, you know? But instead of, um, instead of three months off in the summer, you get a month and a half off and then you get longer breaks throughout the year of a week or two weeks during, you know, the holidays and around the holidays. Um, I just, it's, it's strange to me that, because we all have young kids. My kids are very smart, advanced classes, I'm very proud of them. However, when they go back during three months off, do any, you take three months off of doing anything, you get bad at it.
Correct.
And that's a long time to say, "All right, parents, keep your kids engaged. Have them doing math problems on July 17th." Cause it's probably not happening. Have them read, take three months off of reading, and I know reading's a big thing.
Yeah.
A lot of kids don't read for those entire summer. And then they come back and they've lost nine months of progress because they took three months of never reading a book.
Yes.
Is that a, is that a thing that you'd be open to moving towards one day?
I'd be open to, looking at it. Uh, it would, that would be a, a heavy lift to, to make that happen. And maybe, I'll go back. I remember when we were in high school, we had to do summer reading our junior and senior years. So we had three books, I think, we were supposed to read. And on day one, Mrs. Huber at LCC gave us a test.
Yep.
And she knew that all of us read the Cliff Notes the night before. Most of us failed that test. None of us read during the summer.
Right.
Even if they say it's required and we're gonna have a test on day one, we're not doing it. Uh, I do understand there is that loss over three months, eight weeks, however long it is for, for some of these schools. There is a loss. And I don't know how we fix that, other than trying to encourage parents to get our kids to, to do more.
Well, when you talk about like moving days, we're gonna move days for a couple of kids that have the fair, which.
That's two days, yeah.
Right, you know, but if we're, if we're willing to make adjustments because a couple of kids show chickens, I think it would be appropriate to go, okay. It would be probably better for the whole that they go more, you have longer breaks, but go deeper into the spring and start maybe earlier in the fall.
But, but one thing that was brought up during the meeting, I think one of the teachers did, was, so there's a, a, a test, but like, what's the standard test that all the teachers are teaching for? Like, there's a date that they, all these kids have to take a test. And then really, it felt like after that, any education after that is just, you know, hey, we're gonna teach you because you're a student and I'm a teacher. But like, none of this counts towards the district goals, if you will.
Well, there's the, the statewide third grade reading testing. But, and there's standardized testing throughout, uh, their education too. So it's not just the third grade. You know, we do have to make sure we're not teaching to the test. And that's part of the science of reading program that, you know, we point out that Mississippi went from last to first once they started to implement the science of reading curriculum. That's what we're trying to, we've got kids in first grade, and I'm making up the, the numbers here, or kindergarten. 5% in kindergarten might be behind where they're supposed to be.
Thirty, 36% arrive ready is the, is the Ohio statistic right now.
But, and then in first grade, that gap was nine to 10%? By the time they're in third grade, almost 25% of the students, somewhere in that range, are not reading to the standards that we expect. And that's something that, that's Don, our superintendent, that's his passion right now, fixing this.
Well, I don't think you can fix YouTube.
Now, do we have any idea?
Cause that's, cause let me tell you.
Even though that's how I watch you guys, it's on YouTube, but I don't do Spotify.
Let me tell you, that's why kids don't read, because they're playing video games and watching YouTube.
Yeah.
So are there trends behind this though? Like, so, I mean, it's, it's shocking, you know, 36% of kids are, are kindergarten-ready. But like, what was this statistic 10 years ago? Are they still using the same readiness score? I mean.
Well, my understanding is there was so much focus on sight words only.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not proving to be something that sets them up for lifelong learning and reading.
Okay.
And it's, it may not be the building blocks that people thought that they were, getting away from the sight words. And, but I don't know what the curriculum was 10 years ago. I lived in a different state and I didn't have kids 10 years ago. So I had many different, I had other things on my mind.
Sure, Shawnee always seems to perform very well when it comes to like tests versus other schools in the state.
We have amazing teachers and I don't just say that because my sister is one of them. Uh, I know a lot of our teachers, I've known a lot of them for a long time. And we have amazing educators, there's no doubt about it, best in the county. And, but when we have evidence that our students are falling behind, and we may not be behind other schools, we're still doing better than other schools. But how do we get this 5 to 10 to 15% of kids up to where they need to be? Change can be hard. And even though we've got the best teachers when you wanna have a new curriculum, I don't like change. I didn't like when I had to learn how to use Teams. I don't like this stuff. But we have to accept some change in our lives and figure out how to, to implement it. And we've had an outside consultant come in from Cleveland. He's listened to our teachers' concerns and a lot of them had, they were very passionate and had some serious concerns. And Don is working to address those as we implement the reading improvement plans.
You know, I, I, I think that it'd be interesting to dive into, and we can't do this now, but the role of a parent i- in, in the household. And, you know, you talk about how no one wants to have their kids read or anything. And you know, you talk about how no one wants to have their kids read or anything, but I would venture to guess those kids in four H that know how to take care of animals and know the, the value of hard work and are passionate enough to come to board meetings and speak in front of a room of strangers. Um, I would venture that those kids are probably doing pretty well day one in school. It seems like they're probably getting a good education at home. And, and you look at scholar athletes of the week and people with good work ethic, you see that in the parents and the parents instill that in the kids. And so it's easy to, I, I, as a parent myself, I, I grow concerned about just trusting the school to do a hundred percent of the educating for my kids. Because if I'm not doing anything at home, my kids don't stand a chance.
We, uh, we're in a time right now where some people expect teachers to be parents to their kids too. They've got to be educators. I think we need to sit down as much as possible. I, I cook dinner almost every night and we sit down and eat TVs off. One of my New Year's resolutions is not to have my phone at the table. I don't check anything. And it's, sometimes it's a quick dinner of thirty minutes. Sometimes we sit for an hour. But we have to sit down and just talk to each other, get rid of all the noise. We have so much noise. Facebook, YouTube, Matt, Matt's on YouTube all the time. He had his headphones off. I don't know if you heard that.
Who loves?
Loves it.
I did, I did hear it. And I probably, you're probably right.
It, it's really hard to get through the noise and focus on the core things that we're supposed to be doing as parents and as families. And let's make sure our teachers can educate. Let's not expect them to raise our kids for us.
Well, and as people, I mean, it's, it's amazing the number of people that come on here and we have a conversation, no phones, no computers, no nothing. And then that we get done and they say, wow, we talked for an hour, we talked for an hour and a half. I mean, just being able to have a conversation with people is something that you don't practice on a regular basis. Even sitting at Thanksgiving dinner, I'm, I'm looking around, there's a couple of different phones out. Like, come on.
Yeah.
And then I look at my hand and I'm one of them.
John slaved on that turkey for the one day a year he's gonna make it, so.
It was delicious.
Matt had his hand out that he was slaving over.
It was delicious.
This was back in, let's see, where were we? I took my kids overseas in August and I had, we were at the airport. And my daughter walks up to me and, cause we were just talking, just the three of us were talking. Said, Dad, look at all these people, they're just on their phones. They're not even talking to each other. This is a five-year-old. That is the greatest thing I've ever heard. Love it, Alita.
As long as she doesn't have a phone, that may be her take. It's why, it's why I've held off. My, my oldest is going to be twelve in a month or so. He keeps calling, my friends all have phones. I go, good. You'll be smarter than they are.
I'm not, if you, if they want a phone, they can earn it.
Now, what, one thing, just to close the loop on the, uh, the, the school year thing. I was thinking with those kids in four H, I mean, are there volun, are there teachers that could go over there after the school day and kind of get all their materials kind of gathered up and sit down with those kids at the fair? And, and possibly help make up for those two days that they're missing?
Um, I don't know if the kids would have time. I think they're working well into the night cleaning, cleaning the stalls, feeding their animals. And I think it's an emotional time for those kids.
Okay.
Cause a lot of those animals, they're gonna be getting killed at Keystone the next day. Uh, tho- those have been their babies and we're getting ready to eat them. I don't, I don't know if those kids are in a, a mental space.
The second time the kids are screaming on this podcast.
Don't try, don't, don't talk about Wilbur.
This is worse than year round school.
Now, my kids, my brother raised some cows for us, so, uh, Cow Hockley was the name of our cow, after Cal Hockley in Titanic. He just went to slaughter last week and they're pretty sad that, yeah, they're cows and they're gonna be hamburger and steak.
Are you gonna be getting any of that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just filled up my order for curly's.
It'll go, it'll go to good use.
Good, it'll cow highly.
Um, one thing that was talked about was the third grade guarantee, the reading guarantee. What, what is that?
That's the standard that our, uh, state has for what our, our students, our kids can read at third grade. So making sure everyone can read at this level, whatever words, forget what the exact curriculum calls for, but making sure every kid is up to standard.
Okay, so.
That, that's where you said that was it, twen- thirty-five percent are not meeting that.
Oh, that's kindergarten. That's a separate thing, wasn't even talked about during the board meeting.
Thirty-five percent are ready.
Now, when you look at these state, when you look at like this, I, you know, I assume every year the state sends out, hey, these are our expectations, standards, this is where your kids need to be. And then schools fall in line to set those goals. When, when a school receives those standards, is, is Shawnee's goals always, okay, this is the standard? We want to be thirty percent above the standard, we want to be fifty percent above the standard? Or does Shawnee just set the expectation of we need to be at or above the standard?
Well, we're, we're almost always above it, so I'd like to stay there. And I, I think our teachers and administrators and parents all expect us to, uh, lead with that tradition of excellence, which we always talk about. So we are always one of the top performers. We've got to step there. Our demographics are changing and Shawnee, Allen County, and even across state, we lose, we're losing people. Um, new people are coming in that may not be what Shawnee has had traditionally. Let's make sure we're getting everyone up to the standard, the tradition of excellence that Shawnee's had for a hundred years now.
Well, it's one of the reasons, like, it's why I moved back when we had kids that were of school age was, I know they'll get a good education there. And so like, that's why we pay extra in property taxes. It's why my home costs more than if I lived in Lima City. Um, I, I do worry that with, like, we lose kids every year. It seems like I know families that go, hey, I'm going to Wapahawk, cause Wapahawk also does well, but Wapahawk has nicer facilities. And John's gonna get mad at me, cause I'm gonna jump the boat on probably where he wanted to get to this school topic.
It's okay.
But.
I have a feeling I know where you're going with this.
But, but at, at what point does the facilities begin to hinder the ability to teach at or above the standard?
Yeah, I know those days in August at the middle school where there is no air conditioning. My sister is in one of those classrooms that does not have air conditioning.
Okay.
It's painful. I think that can hinder, uh, learning for, you know, first couple of weeks of school. I don't know how to fix that yet. We all want new schools. We just got a balanced budget coming into twenty twenty-six. And for the foreseeable future, we're gonna have a balanced budget. But we also have changes with property taxes, school funding formulas, how all this works. I do not want to promise people that we're gonna have a new school when we've been deficit spending for a very long time.
Yeah.
Covid messed up a whole lot of things with schools. How parents are raising kids, how we are teaching kids. And we're coming out of that, we're turning a corner. But now we have to deal with these funding issues. Before we promise people a new school, we have to figure out our existing footprint, whether we need all these schools. So we're still looking at, uh, Maplewood, what can be done with that? And we've, yeah, these are things that all, we've got to say this all across the board before we can promise people that we're gonna have a new school.
Well, and it would be irresponsible to just build a new school out of nowhere because obviously it's gonna cost a lot of money. And, uh, while that seems great, uh, it could end up being a complete burden and detriment to the school system. So I understand that. But have we, has, have we drawn up plans on, on what a school would cost? Do we, do we have any idea what that even looks like?
I don't, yeah.
Okay. Uh, cause I mean, you know, we put in all twelve grades in the same building, uh, you know, uh, we, we talk about this being the hundredth year. Is it the hundredth year for that middle school? Is that the original middle school?
Yeah.
That's, that's a, that's an old building. And the, the same, that, the boilers from the middle school also help with the high school too, right? Heat the high school?
I'm not sure, you'd have to ask Smith Bond.
Okay. Have to, have to.
Have them on. I don't know.
Yeah, it's okay though.
I don't know the mechanical system.
Sure.
No, we've had challenges with them. We just had to pay Smith Bond quite a bit of money last year to fix some of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've, we've got some, some issues that we need to address, but we've got to make sure our finances are in order before we do that.
Yeah, well, once they do get in order, do you think it's fair that that's something like the public is aware of?
That we need a new school?
Well, just like, hey, here's how far away we are.
I'm aware we need a new school and I'm in the public.
But just, just how far away we are from it, you know?
I'm not sure. It, it honestly hasn't been something that people have talked about to me, other than heard a few people asking questions about Maplewoods. So Don has sent some letters out to the public addressing that yes, we intend to close Maplewood at some point. We have to figure out what to do with the students. We don't know if some of those students are gonna go to the middle school and then some middle school students go to the high school. Not everyone likes that. Does Elmwood have enough capacity to take on third graders? We're not entirely clear of how all those puzzle pieces are gonna work out yet. And Don is still working on that with Dylan and Dylan Johnberger and our, the rest of our administrative team too.
Well, and, and, and staff cuts was something that came up and it, just from a personal standpoint, uh, my daughter is, uh, is special needs and we had to go through a fight. This was before you were on the board, I believe. But we weren't sure if Laken was even gonna be able to get to go to the, even though we're Shawnee township residents, we were told that they might not have the resources here, but they would still support her, but take her out to like, uh, Creutersville or something.
Right.
And to us, it was like, so now we're being told there wasn't a room available. And, and so I don't even know how we would talk about eliminating Maplewood.
Yeah, and, you know, the special education, uh, department, we, we have a new special ed director who has made sure everyone in Shawnee that has a special ed child is being taken care of. Um, we were over identifying according to the, according to the state, we had a special ed audit. So we were over identifying some kids, so getting a handle on all of that so that people like you and your daughter have got room. And we have to make sure we're doing this with, properly, I'm trying to think of a better word, but because we don't, Merrimore is not educating all of our special needs kids that is now on the local school districts. We have to make sure we're taking care of them and that's a priority for us.
Well, and that was something that came up with these, you know, potential staff cuts or something that might have to happen, um, as budgets tighten. Um, and, and obviously there's some people that are passionate about that. Uh, how do you balance when you're, when you're looking at things? I mean, it's like, no matter what, if you make a decision, you're gonna hurt a group. It's like the, the school calendar year. If you do it earlier, you're gonna hurt the four H kids. If you do it later, you're gonna make less useful days in, in the classroom.
Yeah.
Like, how do you balance when you're looking at?
We, we might have a couple of extra kids per, per class so that we can prioritize, the things, the, the other people we need to take care of. And we, we, a lot of us work for companies. Sometimes we have to look at every dollar that we're spending. Is that the right dollar we're spending? Big companies are doing this across the country. Is every dollar going to our core mission right now? And if we have extra dollars, what can we do with that? We've had some attrition, we haven't had staff cuts. We've had some attrition that's helped us get back to balanced budget with, um, and so what can we do with that now that we're moving forward in the right budget direction, the right fiscal direction? I think we're gonna be doing a lot better. Don is presenting a lot more information and some plans to us for, for things like this.
So when you talk about like, um, teachers and having to make cuts and where money is going, two, three days ago, um, the top ten pays of every township for teachers in school, school districts came out. And I had a, a few people who were, who had messaged me who were shocked to see that we had six or so teachers on a list of the top ten above principals and above positions that in other districts, teachers would not be above. We have many teachers making a hundred and, I think the lowest of our top ten was a hundred and three thousand, give or take a hundred and two thousand dollars.
Um, I can't think of any teachers.
Well, there's, there's five on there. Well, and some of them.
Administrative or.
Well, some of them said severance after it. It said teacher, comma, severance. Um, and, and we are looking at, I don't want to call any teachers out, and I'm sure that they're worth every penny. But how do you evaluate, this person has been a teacher for thirty years and they're great. They're also making a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I, we could get two teachers that we could then grow into being good educators for thirty more years for that price.
Yeah, there, let's see, we had one that we voted on this summer, I think. That might be the severance one you're talking about. The, this person wanted to retire, but when the state issued the new, they went back to what is it, thirty-two or thirty-year retirement, set at thirty-five? But this person had a certain number of quarters, but they could now qualify for retirement. So there was a buyout there that was more cost effective for the school to do over a two-year period, I think.
Mm hmm.
So that could have been the, the severance one. So that could show up as a very high-paid teacher, but they may have gotten a lump sum for their retirement buyout. But over a two-year period, when we replace that teacher with two, I'll make up a number, sixty thousand dollars. And again, I'm just making up this number. It becomes more cost effective to have those two educators than, than that one. But we do have a lot of teachers who have been there for a while. They are on these step program and they may have masters. And so they're gonna be making quite a bit of money compared to other schools.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking now, number one is the superintendent, who I think anybody would agree probably should be the highest paid guy in the district. Two, three, four, five are all teachers. Uh, six is an admin position, then teacher, then a counselor, counselor, and then a teacher. All of them over a hundred and two thousand dollars. Um, and so when you see that, like, I, I have.
Are they counting principals as teachers in there? Cause you didn't mention them with principal.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about principal. You can scroll up and down and you can see like Bath, Elida, Perry. I'm not sure what all it entails, which is why I'm asking the question.
When I, I saw one of those included, I mean, it was also a coach and drove, drove the band.
Some of them do many things, right? I'm not, I'm not sug- and again, they may absolutely be worth a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. I'm not suggesting they're not. I'm sure they're fantastic teachers or else they probably wouldn't still have jobs there.
Yeah, some, some of this is the extra pay they get for coaching, things like that.
Right, but like number, number two is not, they don't have anything extra other than a severance, which, um, and that's the thing that we talked with Aaron Cunningham about being on the board is, he talked about the retire rehire program. How it's tough to go, A, I'm not discounting that there's something to be said for having thirty-five years of experience teaching. I, I happen to be related to a teacher that's been a teacher for forty years at a private school and will teach probably until she dies because she loves it and she seems to be good at it. However, she makes a lot, a lot of money. And when the school implements new things regarding technology or different standards throughout the state, she's probably, I would imagine, less than excited about adjusting her teaching style, which obviously it's changed in forty years.
That's hard. We, in, in our country, we don't like our public servants being around for a long time and making good money. However, do we want our doctors being around for a long time? We, we, experience is good.
Experience is great and I don't want to discount, well, you said, I'm sure that they're all great. But when you go, we have to make cuts, but then I see that there's, if, if I got a bunch of staff members and I see, alright, this person's great, but they've been doing it for forty years. And I could, you, I could hire two of them for the price of what I'm paying for them. I, as an outsider, I would go, how bad are new teachers that we're keeping somebody for forty years who could be retired and receiving a, you know, a, a pension or, or whatever the process is?
And I think you have to look at, at each person, what they bring to the school.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think saying two to one, I, I don't think that's a good way.
It's probably not two to one and it's probably, it's probably four to five or something like that. But it, it does become like, you know, we have a balanced budget, which is great cause for a long time we did not. But the single biggest issue I have, and you can say that you've not heard, like, oh, I, nobody's mentioned the school. I promise, I'm, I'm around every sports field I'm on. Everybody looks over at that school and goes, well, what a joke.
It was one of the comments on the video actually, uh, that we got on, on one of our posts was, I voted yes for, I voted for the trustees, I voted for the police levy, I voted for the Allen County levies, but I voted no on the Shawnee school levy because until they get a new school or until there's a clear plan that I believe is gonna happen, I, I'm gonna vote no. So it is happening and I don't, I, you've been on the board for two years. So it is happening and I don't, I, you've been on the board for two years. I don't expect you to have all the answers there, but that is a real thing that's happening in the community. And my, my sister taught at the high school over a hundred degree temperatures in, in the classroom. Like, I get it.
People are talking about it. It's not the first priority that people come to when they come to the board meetings or when I see someone at a soccer field or.
Well, because I think, because it seems unattainable. Cause I get it. You need to build a new school. You need whatever, $10 million, $20 million, whatever that number is.
Probably more.
And right. And the problem is, the problem is people come out and like a few months ago, or maybe it's been a few years now. Maybe it'd been before you there, before you were there, Shawnee sent out like a 40-page document with like eight different plans for what a school looks like. And it goes in this field and here's if we keep this school, but add this school. It had, it was a huge document that was a behemoth to look through. But when people see like, okay, there's plans, they've done a study, they've determined like they probably have some dollar figures. And then to hear it's not in the works at all is kind of disheartening because it then makes me go, my kid goes and sits in a class with, look, let's not kid ourselves, kids smell. My kid has gym in the summer, that, that classroom is disgusting. I feel bad for those teachers. My one kid coming home from school, he gets in my car and I go, you need to shower immediately because you smell horrid.
They're not using the Axe body spray anymore? Just showering themselves in some Axe body spray?
That's not really any better. So like there are, I, I've spoken to people who have left the school based on that issue. And again, I'm, I'm not saying I would leave Shawnee. I love Shawnee. Um, I love the school and I, the teachers are top notch. And I, look, I'd rather pay, I'd rather pay to be fair. I'd rather our teachers get paid more than our firefighters or our police officers. I think they're way more important on a daily basis.
Coming after you next.
Well, they've all been, right. They all come after me anyways, no matter what I say. So who cares? I, I, the school affects me more than the fire department does or the police department does until somebody breaks into my house or my house burns down.
Yeah.
Short of those two events, the school affects me every day. And so when my, you know, when I hear people talk about it, it gets, I get a little fired up about it because it's the same school that have been, people have been using for a hundred years. And to hear there's not a plan in place is a little, I would say disheartening that it's not like, hey, in 10 years, we're hoping, we're working, we're saving this to put into a pot of money. And I get there are a lot of complications with it all, but.
We're saving money. I don't know what was sent out before three years ago. What I do know is, and I've said this at our board meetings, our previous superintendent, he kind of just stopped showing up. I don't have anything good to say about him. I can't believe that the board hired that person at the time. So we have a lot of things to address by someone who just quit doing their job. And maybe he's going to come after me for, for saying that publicly. But we now, we now have a superintendent who shows up every day and loves his job.
Yeah. Really cares about what he's doing.
He's trying to fix a lot of things that just weren't done by someone who stopped showing up.
Well, and there's, as, you know, you talk about, you know, hey, maybe we can save $50,000 here. In the grand scheme of things, that's not going to get us a new school. A lot of this is state level funding, um, which there's been drastic shakeups in how we're getting our money and how much money public schools get versus private schools. And so maybe we need a little lobbyist help to, to whip some things in shape here and, and at a state level.
Well, the Ohio School Board Association and the teachers unions have their lobbyists to do that.
Okay. Well, we need, we.
They're not, they're not doing it very effectively. It does not seem, because if, if we're not mistaken, I mean, and we've all gotten the letters and the pamphlets and the emails, like funding is way, way down and it's only going to continue down for the next couple of years, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it's, if you hear our elected officials who just passed four property tax reform bills. What they'll say is, we're not cutting your funding. You're just getting, you're still getting more, but less than what you would have gotten under the old levy and tax system. So you thought you were going to get eight million more, but you're going to get six million more. We're not cutting your funding. You're getting more, just not as much as you thought you might get under the old system. That's kind of the simple way of explaining it. But we, we have to figure out how the levy system with the new levies, getting rid of the emergency levies and how all that counts against our 20 mil floor, how that's going to address us for the long term. We would probably have to take on quite a bit of debt to build new schools. Is debt good? Is it bad? It's okay. If we go into debt for something that we need, we do need it. I'm willing to take on debt, but I want to make sure our finances are set up to take that on. And we'll probably be there soon if we understand exactly how all of these changes to levity, levies, the 20 mil floor are going to impact our schools.
Well, and we'll, we'll dive into a deep financial conversation with the treasurer, uh, here next week. So I, I won't go into that too much, but do you?
I was prepared to explain what a mil was too.
I, I actually asked in the meeting, I said, I need the Schoolhouse Rock version of what this millage rate is and all that stuff.
So a mil is $1 for every thousand dollars of assessed value. Assessed value is 35% of your appraised value. So if your house appraised for a hundred thousand dollars, the assessed value is 35,000. And a mil would be, or the mil would be $35. So schools are guaranteed 20 mils. That's the 20 mil floor. So for a hundred thousand dollar house, the assessed value of 35,000, that house, the school would get $700 for that house. $700 in guaranteed funding for that hundred thousand dollar house. So that's the 20 mil floor.
Well, and there, and there are lots of changes, lots of, property tax is a huge thing that is affecting beyond just school districts, but townships in general.
Yeah.
And so we don't really have a, un- until one of these officially passes or until this group of people that wants to just outright get rid of property tax with no real plan in place. Until, until some of these things clear themselves out. I understand it's hard to make a decision because the game could radically shift in a year or two.
Yeah. It's, it's scary to look at the possibility of property taxes going, that's $22 billion in funding. The state doesn't get that money. It's not state money. That's all local money. We don't know who's going to pick up the tab for $22 billion in missing money. Are we going to have a higher income tax after we just went to 2.75% flat tax? And their goal is to get rid of that income tax, maybe in the next general assembly, going 27, 28 general assembly. Would we have to have a 19% sales tax that is then collected by the state and divvied up to local governments?
Right.
People, people may not like the state deciding how much local governments get. Right now, each local government decides how much money they're going to get from their taxes.
Does it go back to a municipal, does it go back to the municipality it was spending? In which case Shawnee doesn't have a lot of commerce happening in it. So Shawnee could take a big hit on it versus Elida has a lot of, when you look at like something as simple as just sales tax. If every, Elida has more commerce, more restaurants, more.
Some big industry though. I don't know if the tax comes from these big plants and corporations and stuff.
So maybe we should ask him. Would, would, would Senovas have to pay, what does Senovas buy with what they buy? Does it come from like your headquarters buys something? So they would pay tax in wherever the Senovas headquarters are? Or would it come back here? Cause it's, it's earmarked for here.
It would be whichever entity within that company. So the Lima Refining Company would pay those sales taxes, not Senovis US Corporation. The Toledo Refining Company, so we own the other refinery, they would pay those sales taxes. That's my understanding. So I, we don't know.
Right. There's just, there's a lot of options and possibilities.
It could be which municipality has the most senior member of the legislature.
Right.
Look at Congress, the, the highway transportation fund. How is that money divvied up in the states? There was a formula created and then I'm going to point out to Wisconsin, because I know Wisconsin had the chairman of the highway subcommittee and the, was, or he was the ranking member. And then the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, pretty two powerful positions in Congress. So for every dollar Wisconsin sent to the highway trust fund, they got like a dollar 25 back because the formula was created by people that were in very good positions.
It's nice to be able to write the formula for yourself.
So do, do we want, does eastern, the east side of Ohio, right now, northwest Ohio happens to control the legislature for the most part. We've got a senate president and a speaker. Does southeast Ohio, Appalachia want our elected officials deciding how much money each of those counties get? If we have the state divvying up how these taxes are spent.
Right.
I'd venture to guess, no, they don't want Speaker Huffman or Senate President McCauley deciding how much money Muskogee County gets.
Right. Well, and I'm not even sure I'd want it based on a county. I'm not sure I'd want the county to decide this township gets X amount, this township gets X amount. Cause I like to think that it'd be fair, but there is a for sure fair way to do it, which is the way we've been doing it for a hundred years.
Right now we have local control of our property taxes. Right now it seems like that's a pretty good thing. And after the reforms that they just passed, it should be signed into law any day now. Let's see how those work out. And if that's not working out, let's have the conversation again. But I'm not signing any ballot initiative that gets rid of property taxes yet.
Well, that'll be, that'll be a whole different ball of wax. And I mean, do you guys kind of have to be planning for a bunch of different scenarios? It's gotta be weird to be getting money from revenue streams that aren't guaranteed to be there next year. I mean, I, this is certainly a conversation for Chris next week, but.
She does an amazing job and she will give you the, the one-on-one version of how she is putting money in the different pots.
Okay.
To, to plan for these things.
So what, what do you want families and taxpayers and Shawnee to understand about kind of the board and what direction you guys are going in right now?
I want people to come and ask questions at board meetings. Show up. If you're unhappy about something, well, listen. For me, this is core to me being, my role on the board is open, honest questions. I don't care who you are, come and speak. We have, I worked for Congressman, he had 125 town hall meetings a year. All you had to do was show up, write your name on a slip of paper. You get to ask whatever you want. You got a few minutes. We only have so much time, so we have limited number of minutes that each person gets to talk, but, um, he would do that. So that's just ingrained in me at local government, even when he was a member of Congress. 125 these year, more than any other member of Congress. So again, it's in my DNA as now unelected official, even though I had no opposition. But I want us to keep running like that. Show up. If you want to speak on something, give us a slip and come talk about it.
And what's the frequency of your board meetings?
Once a month.
Okay.
Usually the third Tuesday of the month. So come January, we have to set a new calendar. And that's what we have been doing, uh, past, since I've been on the board is that third Thursday. Then we'll have a special meeting every now and again, and that's usually published. I think we do, has to be at least 48 hours in advance is when that's published in the news and on the websites. People should dig into our board documents. Every single board doc, every single check that goes out of the school is all available on our board doc website. So if you've got questions about what we're spending, it's there.
If only every organization was run that transparently, that'd be super.
We, we do a good job of that.
Well, good. And so like you said, you can just show up with a piece of paper. There's no formal like application before that they gotta get it and then you guys have to approve it, anything like that. Just show up, piece of paper and you get time to speak during that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you know, I'll point out, some people said that, I've had a couple of friends who said, why you guys all just vote yes on everything? A lot of these things are figured out before we go in there. You know, Don or Chris will call each of us and say, hey, what are you thinking about this? Give us a rundown. Yeah. I think I may, all right, that or no, I'm not, not sure about that. So call each board member individually or email each one individually and try to figure out some of these things before we go in there.
Yep.
Um, and then have, we'll have conversations about it, like you saw it. Even though we, we had an idea of how people were feeling about the counters, I didn't know exactly what Marlena Schaff or Clay or Jerome were going to be feeling because we can't have those types of conversations as a group. That would be considered a public meeting. So we have to have some individual conversations, talk through it. And then when we go in, we have a better idea of where people are. But some of the stuff is pretty standard volunteers, things like that where, um, we generally follow the recommendations from our administrative staff and the superintendent. There's, there's a lot of yes votes because volunteers usually aren't controversial. The superintendent and the administrators do a good job of vetting teachers for the most part. So we usually follow their recommendations on that.
Yeah. And I mean, I know I said this earlier, but you know, in, in that meeting, it, there was back and forth. I mean, the, the board members were listening, even in the middle of a discussion, it's not like somebody had to have the floor. They could just overhear a little bit of, um, commotion in the back, we'll say. And I think it was Marlena just stopped and said, no, hey, wait, you, you speak for a second. And so there's a few different moments there where you guys asked for the opinion. I mean, Clay at one point asked for, what is the teacher's viewpoint of this topic? And so it was very interactive and you guys were wanting to get input from the community.
I'm going to miss Clay because he's an attorney and like, he's got good questions and knows how to pull answers out of people. I'm going to miss him a lot.
If you start talking like this, we're going to have, Paul Neff is going to start showing up to, to, to these board meetings.
Well, I'm just saying, tell your people that are looking at the school to come to the board meeting.
Right. And, and believe me, I, I'm the first guy that's guilty of it. I've not ever been to one. I, I have not been, um, but I've been very vocal on, I don't need to go to a board, and I don't need to go to a board meeting to know. Some things are just not affordable. I don't, I don't have a jet. I can't afford a jet. So I don't need to go look at jets or talk to a guy about a jet because I know it's not in the works.
They're fun to look at.
They're fun to look at, but I'm not, would take, taking my time to go visit one that I know I can't afford. So like if a school is not in the budget and cannot be afforded, that's fine. I just, I think people want to know that it's at least recognized by the people that are setting those budgets, that this is a thing that we need, we can't just keep riding. I think you had a great analogy for it, which is it, we're just building a boat. We keep repairing a boat that is sinking and we just keep throwing a board on it here and there. Eventually you can't repair it anymore. And I don't want to get to the point where it's unreparable and we still don't have an idea of what we're doing.
As widely recognized, we need a new school. We have to figure out how we get there in, in a way that does not damage our ability to pay our teachers, educate our students and do everything else we need to do. And I do not want to, uh, pay for something that we can't afford if we are in a poor fiscal spot.
Don't want it to be a burden.
Well, I think a lot of people look at the school as a community space. I mean, a lot of people have pride on, you know, we'll go to the basketball game tonight. There will be a lot of Shawnee residents there supporting the school and the students that have not maybe ever had students there and they've just lived in Shawnee or haven't had students in the school system for 50 years and they'll be there supporting it. And so like the other thing that I know I wanted to address was like it being used as a more of a communal place. Shawnee doesn't really have like a downtown area, um, a communal space. So like when you guys did the event, and I don't know who approved the events or whatever in the fall.
The Jubilee.
I, I thought that was fantastic that it was, because a lot of people look at the school as a pseudo-community space.
That's where I want to go with our schools. I want that event every year at the school.
Yeah.
I think Don Digglia took a resolution to the, that we wrote up at the school board, took that to the township meeting, maybe October and read it and recognize all the people who put that event together. And our resolution said that the school board wants that, that at the school every, it's our community space. So let's have more events there.
Are there, are there other things you'd like to see there? What other events do you envision? Like obviously we had the veteran event that was, that's not really a school event.
I, I think about even like, uh, like fifth quarter. I mean, you know, all the students are sitting there running around after, after the football games and that thing. But it's like, you know, would it make sense to go into the gym? But I, does that even make, is that even a possibility? Like if, if the community wants to use the school, how would they go about doing that?
Yeah. You can, you can get on the website and submit rental forms.
Okay.
Never seen something like that. That's a good idea.
Okay.
You got, you guys have good ideas in how Shawnee, it's usually the Shawnee Lions church runs at fifth quarter.
Yeah.
You guys have really good ideas. So. You guys have really good ideas. So bring more of those to us. I like that.
Alright. So you've been on the board for two years. What's, what's kind of the, your, your goal when you think about your time that you're serving here? What legacy do you want to leave? Um, and when do you feel like you're gonna, like your job has been done?
I don't know. I don't know when my job will be done. I'm really excited that we have board approval to bring back our traditional Indian mascot. So we did that over the summer. I wanna see that implemented. I wanna make sure that our current leadership, that ev- all of the good things that they are doing, that the next generation continues to do that. How do we, we have a superintendent shortage in our state, probably in our country. Who is the next Don Diglia? I wish he could stick around forever. But I can't stick around forever and I don't think Don will stick around for another thirty years.
Time doesn't work that way.
Time doesn't work that way. So who is our next Don Diglia? I, I hope he will stick around for many more years to come. But we've got to find the next generation. So I'd like to be around to um, figure out what that looks like. Uh, my kids are in kindergarten, second grade. I'd like to be around for them. They think I make the laws for the school. I tell them that's not really what I do.
Oh, they don't have.
But they think it's pretty cool. So they're proud of me and they'd like to, I, I'd like to make sure they see me still being active and supporting their school and helping out that way too.
I, I'd like to say, I love that you and the newest member, and I hope you guys pick two more members of people that have kids in the school. It was, that was one of the more contentious things about Illado was there were people running, did not have kids in the school, never had had kids in the school system.
Kid was, well, worse. Kid was homeschooled, the other one was going to LCC.
And, and so like I, I think it's hard to, it's hard to be, you know, making the laws, so to speak, as your daughter would put it. If you're not around it. And the only way you can really be around it is to be in it. Like you're not, you, you know, you could probably go sit in a classroom, but the only way you're gonna know like, alright, this is what third graders are doing, is if you've got a kid that's in the third grade. And this is the school and this is what it's like, this is what parents are talking about on the sidelines, waiting for a soccer game to start. Is if you're engaged as a, a member. And I, I am thrilled that you're on with somebody that has young kids that will see the progression of, you know, you'll, you'll cover it all, assuming you stay in the area. And you'll see some of the pitfalls that parents talk about. And you know, a lot of us don't show up at meetings and we should, but you'll, you'll get it as you're in it.
Well, and that's, that's good, but um, when we have to appoint two new members, I'm, I'm not gonna make that a requirement. We've got our current board president, Scott Gephardt. He's a principal at Spencerville. He lives in Shawnee. That would be, so he has submitted uh, an application to be on or a letter of interest to be reappointed to the board. I don't want to lose someone who has that much experience and understands what happens in a school every day, just because he doesn't have a kid in the school anymore. That would be devastating to, to lose someone like that. Clay Ballot, his kids all went to Shawnee, Clay went to Shawnee. He's got a brilliant attorney's mind and he's had twenty years of experience on the board. So just because he doesn't have kids in the school anymore, we're, I don't wanna lose that knowledge and his passion for the school. So it's, it's a good thing to have people whose kids are in school. I think so, but I also don't want to limit, I don't want to make that a, a requirement in my moment. It wouldn't be a requirement.
Right. I'm not suggesting it be a requirement, but I love that you do. And I, I get it. If everybody only had a kindergartner and it was, we only select people who have a kindergarten or first grade be on the school board, obviously they'd have no idea about the issues in the high school or issues, you know. And obviously you can't put a price on experience like we said earlier. Well, you can, you can. It's a lot of money apparently, but there is.
It's good to have people who don't have kids in school too, because then you have someone who's thinking, I don't have kids in school. Why the heck are we gonna pay for this? You know, thinking about how other taxpayers are looking at this too. I think it's good to have representation from across the spectrum.
We got any teachers on, teachers in the running for the school board?
Can't do that.
Teachers can't be on the school board?
No.
Oh, that'd be, okay. Well, fair enough. Well, I, I appreciate that you are doing it, obviously. Uh, it's a big deal. And I, you know, we talk about, hey, you know, it'd be nice if people had kids. Like ultimately, if that be, if that person steps out, you gotta find somebody else to replace that person. Um, and that, that doesn't mean that there's somebody just waiting around that has a big heart ready to serve. Um, and so we, we have a, a lack of superintendents. We have a lack of volunteers. We have a lack of everything across the board. So when, when you got good people on the board, let's keep them. Um, and so.
And Matt asks what other things I'd like to see at Shawnee. We, we do lack that town hall space. So I don't know if you were gonna talk about this, but we did have a town hall event planned at Shawnee. It's no secret that I asked that to be polled.
I wasn't aware that you asked that to be polled.
Yeah.
I, I, I had heard that it was gonna be there. I didn't want to bring it up just because it was a little, you know, I don't want to cause any drama there, but.
So I, I recognized that there were some concerns about it, objectivity uh, from how that was going to be. So I asked that it be moderated by someone else. So we had actually found someone to be a moderator before the event was moved over to Whitetail.
Should've asked John and I. We'd have been all over.
I didn't know.
We didn't have a podcast going at the time.
We had um, we had Mr. Unterbrink from the Chamber of Commerce, who prepared to be a nice objective moderator. For us before the event was moved. So.
So they moved it because you were changing the moderator?
No.
Cause that's fair to pick the moderator if you guys, if it's gonna be in your building.
Thank you. So I had asked, let's relook at this. I have real concerns about a moderator who wanted to be on the ballot, but ballot wasn't approved and he ran two years ago. And after doing some research, probably had um, didn't have an ability to be an objective person. And from other people's perspective, and I wrote this in a letter, looked like kind of a setup. I don't know if the other two candidates would have showed up if we had that event at our school with somebody moderating that we had chosen. I have no clue. I haven't talked to them.
Yeah.
About any of this. But I'd like to think that having someone from outside, like the president of our local chamber of commerce, be a moderator, would have had some good questions that focus on business development, a lot of other things. So we were prepared to have that event in our school. Unterbrink was, um, Josh Unterbrink was going to be the moderator if that event wasn't moved.
Okay. Well, that, that would have been great. Um, I, I, it, to me, it sounded like it got, it, it, the, the story I had heard was it got moved just immediately after, almost canceled. Nope, this isn't gonna happen. And so didn't hear any of the backstory on.
That's the backstory.
Well, but there's, there's always three sides to every story. There's, you know, your side, my side, and then the, then the truth. So um.
The truth is I had some real concerns.
Well, and rightfully so.
So I went and found someone who was willing to be a moderator.
Yeah.
But the person who organized that event said, no, I'm just gonna move it instead.
Did you consider reaching out to the, all the, the incumbents and the four people running and say, would you be willing to do this?
So no.
That's, well.
I think if Josh Unterbrink had been the moderator, then he probably would have reached out to everyone and said, I'm gonna be the moderator. Would you still, would you come to this? I don't know what would have happened.
It could be fun to get a senior student that's involved in civics or something and ask a few questions.
We talked about that.
It's, that, that would be so great to see because Hugh Downs is a fantastic facility. You got great parking, safety wise. It's perfect to have it there. Um, refreshing to hear that, hear this part of the conversation because it was frustrating the, the optics that maybe Shawnee didn't want to have that event there. Um, but if it was, if you guys wanted to have your own moderator, I think you have the right to choose that first off. And I think that's important because with the whole township thing, a lot of emotions, a lot of uh, people have opinions clearly formed. And one thing we know is we haven't gotten to hear everything. And so um, yeah, it, that, that makes sense. You guys would have had your own moderator.
Uh, that was my goal.
Okay.
Objectivity.
Okay. Well, we're, next time this comes around, we'll start, we'll start shaking the trees for you and make, make sure that happens.
I'd, I'd love to see more, like I, honestly, I've been going to more, I don't know how I feel about it. I've been going to more of these like trustee meetings and whatnot, a- as, as you should as a resident. And with somebody that pays taxes to the school, I should go to more school board meetings. I, like, the facilities at the tra- at the, at the township are not that great. Like some of these, some of these meetings you know will be highly attended. And we're sitting in folding chairs in a unheated garage. Now fortunately, the meetings never last more than like ten minutes, which is convenient. But like, to have them at more of a communal, you know, neutral place.
Yeah.
I think would be, would be super.
Yeah, I have not been to trustee meetings.
You're not missing a lot.
I've heard it's.
They're quick.
Quite the show. There's, I've looked at the website after some of this stuff started popping up. We've got some real communications issues that need to be addressed going forward.
Well, hopefully they, Kenny Gross was on the school board. Hopefully he takes some of the things he learned from a well-functioning school board to the trustees and can implement some of these things like, hey, if you're, there, there's never, I've never been to one that's had more than like twenty people. And I don't think anybody ever really wants to talk. So like to let people talk seems like a, a simple, easy idea. And probably the best way for those of you on the board to hear from people.
Yeah. Letting people voice their opinion is usually the best thing.
Todd, anything else you wanna, you wanna cover today?
I'll talk about whatever you guys want.
Well, I know we're sitting here over Thanksgiving break, you know, got time with the family. I don't want to take, take that away from anybody here.
Well, you had, you had, before you started, you were talking about suits and you had mentioned you were considering buying something that was yellow and blue. Are you going to put on the record that you're a Michigan person? Cause I wouldn't, I wouldn't wear yellow and blue if it was free and it was the best looking thing ever.
Uh, no, I, I didn't think about that when I was, when I saw this mustard and blue sport coat.
So it wasn't maize and blue.
That's what we should, we should just start calling Michigan blue. It should be mustard and mustard, not maize and blue. It's mustard and blue. That's, that's way more insulting.
Until Ohio State beats Michigan, hopefully tomorrow, uh, I'm not calling Michigan anything. They've got our number for some reason right now and do not like that.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be, okay, it's been four years.
Four years.
Yeah. And everyone thought Ryan Day was gonna have to resign in December of last year.
I was on that train. If he would have gotten blown out to Texas that first round, I don't think he'd be coaching right now.
I think, I think we're gonna be alright.
National championship tends to temper nerves a little bit.
But I don't like that Michigan used to say they beat the national champions. I don't like that. Hopefully there's no flag planting. No, that, no fighting on the.
Well, we can, we can try to pass resolutions to make that illegal in the state of Ohio to plant a flag.
Well, they did in Ohio.
Oh, no, they tried. I know.
Representative Williams introduced it. Yeah. So he was pretty passionate.
You can still do it in Michigan though, baby.
He's a friend of mine and yeah, he was pretty passionate about that.
Wait a second. Was he serious about that? Or is that just kinda like, ah, this'll be funny?
He's pretty serious about things, he does.
Okay.
He's, he's one of the smartest people I've ever met too.
Okay.
That guy is awesome.
Awesome. Well, since you know some of the, since, since we have somebody that is fairly knowledgeable about legislation, one thing I'm curious about is the gambling aspect. And like Governor Dewine has walked back, like, hey, I wish I wouldn't have signed sports betting in Ohio. What, how do you feel about that? Especially given that the Guardians players like to throw balls intentionally and.
It's scary. I don't do any of the online gambling, any of that betting stuff. I, so I don't know how it works. I don't know what the parlays and all that stuff is, but that can be scary. The mob was involved with NFL players or something.
That was a real wild one. They had a poker game going on where you, if you wore certain glasses, you could see the, what the card was on the back of the card.
It's, and I'm, my grandma is a hundred percent of times. So I appreciate some creativity there.
That's, that's a lot of creativity.
That stuff gets a little scary. And when we get into high school NIL stuff, you know, where, where does this?
That's a, that's a great point. It does, does. So I know, I think it was voted on by athletic directors when they passed, was it athletic directors?
Trip say, something that had to, that was the athletic directors who were involved with that.
So like what's, what's your take? You take it based on that? You're not a fan of high schoolers getting paid?
I don't think I am. I don't think I was, and my niece gets NIL money at University of Toledo for volleyball, but I was a little worried about that. I mean, these are, they're still kids. Even, I was twenty-two years old. I don't know if he should have been giving me that kind of money. I, I don't know if a better way is to create accounts for these kids and put money into it and they get it at a certain age.
Yeah.
We, we have a, a. Our kids, they don't understand money, finances, stuff going through school. And then we give them a million dollars a year.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Well, to be fair, not everybody in high school is getting, there's very few high schoolers that are worth that much money.
Littered with young kids who have been given power at a young age, going from young Roman emperors to European kings who have tremendous wealth and power as teenagers. Not a lot of them turned out to be um, good benevolent dictators.
Right.
And so I don't think it's a good idea to give that much money and power to young kids.
Yeah, high, high school's a little sketchy, but at least college, like i- it's tough when you see Jeremiah Smith and you got, everyone's wearing his jersey and you getting all the ratings, all the money going to the school for these players and none of that's going to the players. I get it in college, but high school, there's, there's not. I, I mean, we, we got a deficit on the football stadium.
It's easier to wrap your head around, he's an adult. If somebody wants to pay that guy money, he's an adult.
Exactly.
Kids are different. Right. It's different if you go, alright, you know, like we look at Shawnee has two very good young basketball players that are committed to college already. Um, you know, I, I don't know that either of them are eighteen, but one of them is certainly not eighteen. And you go, it's tough to justify like, I, giving a seventeen-year-old money.
It's, it's hard. I'm, yeah.
Are you disappointed that like, schools weren't more involved and they leave it up to athletic directors? Do you know how, do you know how Steve Owen, um, or uh?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
That was, I assume he was the voting. Do you know, do we know how he voted?
No, I don't. No. Um, not sure. He might have to come on here, right?
Might, might have to bring Steve Owen.
Maybe have a handful of local athletic directors, um, put it out to all of them, all, all of them in the county and ask them come on, including LCC, whatever private schools too.
Yeah, maybe we'll just do a whole town hall about it and we can host it at the Hugh Downs Auditorium.
We would be glad to host.
Love to hear that.
We will find an objective moderator. Um. Yeah, something, you know, we were talking about earlier, social media and YouTube, like we've, we've gotta get our, our hands on this stuff too. As parents, as educators, during all of the trustee issues there. I'm not on Facebook or Instagram, but people would send me screenshots. There's a lot of vitriol out there. There was people who are supposed to be our heroes.
People are very fired up.
I was at that town hall meeting, I was sitting in the back row and I heard people talking about, I can't wait to post this and slam her. And I've got my five year, or my seven-year-old son there. Is that what he wants to hear from people who are our heroes? We've gotta calm down and think before we post and stop slamming people, personal attacks because we disagree with them. That's scary to me. I don't, I don't like that. And there are probably people who know I'm, I'm talking about them right now. But I don't care because they're supposed to be our heroes. Don't go after people's family. Don't go after people's daughters. That's, that's devastating to young kids when they see them.
You shouldn't go after individuals. It's not productive because if, if I completely disagree.
Election. But I didn't have a side in all this, by the way. I know who I voted for.
Sure.
But that's scary stuff. I don't like it.
It's ultimately, if you disagree with somebody, the best way to figure out how to get through it is by having a conversation about that topic or that subject or whatever that might be. Um, and it is staying silent and just letting anger fester up in you. And then just, you know, you can freely go onto Facebook and post whatever you want. Congratulations. It's a lot more difficult to say those things.
Not true, but people. Not true, but people then believe it. Yeah, I saw that after the letter to the editor I wrote. Somebody sent me a screenshot. Well, no, that's actually true. And I just explained to you guys how that whole candidate forum went about and Shawnee. It's like, no, that's not true. Well, people think it's true. I'm not getting on Facebook. I don't care.
Well, Matt and I have to balance that out a decent amount because there's people that reach out to us and they, they, they'll share information with us. And ultimately, it's, it's again, like, thank you for this information, but that doesn't mean that's the truth.
No.
Um, I, I would like to get to the other side. It's why we tried so hard to get, uh, the two incumbents on, just so we could talk to them and get to know who they are as people. Um, and it, you know, I, I can understand the strategy to not and, you know, certainly you, there's a lot of different factors that happen in that trustee election, but I, I think that, I think if they would have been less silent, it could have helped at least.
Yeah, I know Ted came door to door in my neighborhood, so I know he was out there working and I've known Ted because he coached my niece in basketball at Shawnee. So I've known him for a while. I know what he's like with young people. I know he expects them to work hard and be good citizens. So I saw him going door to door. I'm not sure what Mr. Spielis was doing. Um, and again, I've, I've not talked to either of them about anything related to the campaign, other than when Ted came to my house. So I don't know what their campaign strategies were, but it certainly didn't.
It didn't work.
Work and, you know, there must have been some anger there that, um, that they didn't recognize. Or maybe they didn't think it was real because not everything you see on social media.
Right. Couple, couple people can make a big deal about something and blow it up, but that's not how everybody feels.
No, so, you know, there were people who didn't recognize that some of that anger was more real than, than what we thought.
This, this idea of transparency reminds me of something that I wanted to ask you about because I think it's important. Every once in a while.
I'm making sure we're not going past 12.
I'm alright.
Okay.
And so this is, this is actually related to the school. When something happens, an incident happens, good or bad, um, sometimes the school will send out, uh, you know, a final forms, you know, just a short little, hey, this thing happened. What is the process for that and how do you juggle sharing more information than is necessary or not sharing enough information? Like, what, what is the process? Should an incident take place? Let, let's just say a scary situation take place. How do you guys determine how much gets shared or not shared? And is that even your decision or is that the superintendent's decision?
It's a mixture of both. You have to balance what you can tell people to reassure them that you have a good handle on the situation without interfering with investigations. Whether it's a police investigation into, um, a teacher or something, whether it's the supposed benzene leak that happened in the spring over on Buckeye Road. That was poor communication. It's not from, not from the, I'll get into it if you guys want me to. Um, to the one that was sent out, what was that, a week ago now about a potential threat? If the police are involved, we talk to our attorneys. How can we message this? So we give them, just give people just enough without interfering with an investigation. That's hard. Uh, we follow our attorney's advice usually. Sometimes I push for a little more. Sometimes we can give a little more. Um, but we can't always do that and, but we have to figure, there's a balance there. I think we do a pretty good job of it and people will still call me and say, can you tell me more about this? I really can't, you know, freaking police and these people have attorneys. Call their attorneys, call the police, cause there's nothing more I can tell you. We had a discussion, an executive session.
Yep.
And I can't tell you anymore because that could be interfering with something. We have to figure out the balance and I don't know if we always do a good job, but we try.
So you guys seem to get the information out fairly quickly. So is this like, like the old school phone tree where like, somebody calls you and then you call two other people and then you all get on a Zoom call to have a discussion? Or is it like, hey, we have to meet tomorrow morning to talk about it?
Depending on the issue, our superintendent usually has the ability to do those things. Move forward and then call and inform or email and inform, hey, this is going out and just a second here is why we did this. Alright. And Don has been around long enough. He's, we trust him to do the right thing in instances like that. Yeah, and he, our attorney, we have, um, on retainer down in Columbus. That guy is very responsive. So we move pretty quickly if something needs to go out. Yeah, and of course, if, if you have more questions, you can always call one of the board members and email us and try to get back to you as soon as possible.
But a lot of times it's out of your, like you said, if, if it's a, if it becomes a police matter, there's only so much you can say.
Still, sometimes it just feels good to talk to somebody and voice your opinion. And then even if that person says, I can't give you anymore, at least you got to be on the phone with someone, have a conversation.
Heck, before the, before the board meeting, I called the, the dispatch center uh, because there was cop cars flying all over the, my, my wife was concerned and I said, okay, I'm gonna figure out what's going on. And then that was the day that there was that chase that ended, uh, literally right behind my house. And the, the dispatch person couldn't tell me anything, but she did say, get inside your house, lock your doors. So that confirmed, it did make me feel somewhat better. Um, but I mainly wanted to know if I needed to go to my basement and take cover or if there was just.
School board meeting.
And then I still made it anyways. On the way to the school board meeting, I got a call back from the dispatch and she let me know that it was all clear, but.
I was crossing 501 right as all those state troopers passed 501 and Wapah, or Spencerville Road. They were flying right in front of me. I was like, man, there's something going on, but I didn't see the car in front of them getting away.
My wife got passed. She, so she was working in Salina coming home and so that's where it was going and she, this car just flew by her and she noticed two cop cars behind her, had their lights on. Ended up taking a right-hand turn, so she almost called at that time to say, you went the wrong way if you're chasing this guy.
Yeah.
Turns out they were chasing that guy. But, yeah, that, that was a crazy one and that was my first interaction with the dispatch center, so.
That was something.
Got to, get to learn more about them.
Did you wait on hold for seven minutes?
I did not wait on hold for seven minutes, but they did call me back. But I've heard more stories about that, but that's a different podcast, so.
Yeah, just a friendly reminder, everyone, if the police or firefighters or an ambulance are coming up, move out of the way.
Right, please.
Don't just freeze. Get the hell out of the way. Don't be left lane drivers. Come on, let's, let's be a little better. Let's be smarter.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, you guys, you know, talk about transparency. That's one of our goals, always be transparent. Make sure people know what the school is up to. It's one of our big, biggest, you know, um, things that we spend money on. Our taxpayer money, it's, we've only got so much of it to give out, so we want to do it the right way. We want to make sure people know what we're spending money on. As board members, our job is to make sure each department is spending money correctly. And we review those budgets with Chris and Don. And Chris does a great job of making sure people like me who don't always understand tax policy the best, understands how things are being implemented. I don't, I've managed a few million-dollar budgets in my line of work at different associations and where I am now. Uh, I have not had to manage multiple buckets with outside parents associations, football field program, all of this going on. So I have a pretty good understanding of how it works, but thank God we've got Chris there. She's phenomenal treasure and, and Don. Working with her, our previous superintendent did not work well with others. And now we have someone who has taken good control and, and managing all of this. So, and, and our job as the elected officials is to provide good oversight of that. You know, our trustees, our school board, we're the elected officials here. Our job is to provide oversight and be responsive to people's concerns. And I'm gonna go to, I'll go to the trustees in a second, but I, I heard a comment that our trustees don't need to meddle in any departments. This, it was a comment made on, on your podcast. That really bothered me.
Well, they're ultimately the bosses of those departments.
Thank you. So, and this is foundational. This is foundational to our country. I just finished a book on a war hero in our country. This war hero, he became the Philadelphia military, um, boss. He was appointed by George Washington to be the military overseer of the city of Philadelphia. He was a war hero for, for many years. And the Pennsylvania Executive Commission did not like that this military, blank, I don't know the word, but the person in charge of all of Philadelphia was suddenly living a very lavish lifestyle. Running smuggling operations with a boat called the Charming Nancy. Using the government's wagons for personal use. And so the Pennsylvania Executive Commission issued charges against this person. Seventeen seventy-eight, seventeen seventy-nine, something like that. And referred him to George Washington and George Washington had, in the middle of his war, had to have a military tribunal for this person. Eventually found the person guilty of using the taxpayer-funded transportation, the government's wagons for personal use. That really struck me, given everything that is going on here. That person was Benedict Arnold.
Oh, no.
A war hero who, and this is one of the final straws. Not soon after that, he convinced George Washington to give him control of West Point. And then everything was exposed pretty soon after, but that was the elected Pennsylvania Executive Commission who levied these charges against the military commander of Philadelphia. I'm sure there are other instances where elected officials were doing oversight of people when they noticed something isn't going on. I don't know what's happening in our township. I have no clue what is going on. But to say our elected officials should not be doing oversight of unelected people is completely wrong. It is foundational to our representative and democratic form of government. And I hope our current trustees are very, very in tune with what's, for our new trustees, with what is going on with the departments. They should be in there asking questions. Our trustee meeting should have oversight of the departments. Call them in, make them, not sit on the dais with them. They should.
They should be basing them, right.
Should have to come in and justify their budget every year. We need to do things like that.
Well, and you, you hope that every person, it, when you're making a decision at that level, when you get voted in by the people, that is this decision making the township a better place? Or for your, i- is this making Shawnee schools a better school system? And so as, i- if you, if you trust that the people that are being voted in are doing that, then you need to trust them to make their decisions. And so regardless of what your thoughts are with the trustee situation, you know, Chief Miller interviewed with these guys, got hired, had to have a pretty good idea of what types of, what, what type of leader they were looking, the, the trustees were looking for. And I, it, it may be fair to say, you know, we don't know everything that's going on, that he didn't live up to what those two, wh- what the trustees wanted. And the trustees have every right to, to, to fire him in the upcoming meeting if that's what they want to do and if that's what they feel is best for the township. And ultimately, the people voted these trustees in three, three and a half years ago. So that is the way that this system works and, um, you know, you don't have to like it, but that's, that's, that's what's happening.
And we, during the, I think when you had one of the incoming trustees on here and a few other people talked about, well, if they hired someone who didn't do a good job, maybe we should hold them accountable for that. Okay. We had a superintendent who did not do a good job. But one of our incoming trustees was the school board president who hired that superintendent. So I want all of us to live up to things that we have said for, let's all be held accountable. And same for me.
Yeah.
Do what we said we were gonna do and if we've made bad decisions, let's own up to it.
Easy.
I've, you know, I made a, I made comments when we were looking for a new superintendent. The only thing I knew was what a retiree hire was. I was brand new on the board. And I knew our previous super was a retiree hire. I was like, I don't want one of those. I want a new person. I want someone that doesn't look like anyone else up on those pictures. Oh God, I was wrong though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've told Don this. I was wrong. I only knew what a retiree hire was. So I didn't want one of those again. I was wrong. And I've admitted that. We've got one of the best right now.
Well, and there, when he got on, I do remember some people that I talked to that were like, oh my gosh, why, you know, we just hired another Band-Aid. Because we didn't get some young guy that we're gonna be able to be in this district for years, but, you know, I, I've spent a little bit of time with Don and you have obviously spent quite a, quite a bit of time. I really respect what he does and I respect his passion for the, for the district. I think we're a better district with him leading. Um, even if, if that's just for a few years to, to teach and educate, um, the, the people in the district until we find the next superintendent, like you said.
Yeah, and hopefully that's a long time away. I don't know what Don's plans are in 10 years. I know he likes his wood shop.
When you're, when you're steering your ship and, and the, the school district is a big ship, it does not turn quickly and easily. And when you get, I, I, there is something to be said for, we're gonna hire a guy that's only gonna be here for three, four, or five years. We're only gonna be able to turn the ship so much in one direction and then we're gonna have to turn it again. Because we'll get a new superintendent in here at some point in the next, I don't know how long he's gonna stick around, like you said. If he does a great job, I wish forever, but that's just not realistic. So there does, like, you can't, you do have to find somebody that can stay the course of the ship for a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's a big ship and there are a lot of big personalities, a lot of people involved. He does a really good job of walking up to people and explaining why we do things. After, after Don sent out the letter about reading improvement programs, somebody emailed him and said, well, how much does this consultant cost the district? Don drove over that person's business and said, I'd like to meet with so-and-so. And the person who wrote him that letter emailed the school board and said, that is one of the best things I've ever seen. That the superintendent drove over to have a one-on-one conversation with me. And I said, where do we find the next person who can do that? We've gotta find those people who can show up, have the ability to have a one-on-one conversation with people. Not just get on social media and lob bombs and hide behind a desk, be out there. And God willing, we'll find someone if Don ever decides to retire.
Feeling good about some of the candidates you got for the school board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some people who have been around for a long time, a lot of great experience. Some people who have shown interest in the school board before, but never really moved forward with it. And then our current board president, obviously qualified. So we'll have, we'll interview everyone, give everyone a chance. And I think, yeah, we should be good. And I've still encouraged a few other people to send in letters of interest. So we might get a couple more.
What kind of commitment is that, is that, should people expect if they do have interest in that?
I've told people, it could be one to two hours a week. So it, you know, when you're a parent and you're juggling piano lessons, soccer, homework, 20 minutes of reading every night, trying to figure out how to have a family dinner and then sit and have a cigar at nine o'clock at night, it can be hard. But you find time. You just have to do it. If you're not doing it, then people will say, this person is not responsive. I try to respond to people within an hour or two. And Don usually responds to people as quickly as he can when they reach out to us.
Or shows up to their house, right? Um, when, when do you hope to have in, um, like, when, when will this decision be made for the remaining two members? What, what's the cutoff for when they can submit a interest letter?
So we would like to have people submit interest letters no later than really Christmas, maybe a week before that. We cannot point to someone within 10 days of a vacancy. So the vacancy becomes official January 1st. January first. So it would be ten days after that is when we could point someone, but no later than thirty days.
Okay, so you got a twenty day window to hire people.
We'll probably have a a couple extra meetings in January where we do this stuff.
Best of luck.
Thanks. Looking forward to it. It's a new new thing for me. So learning that, go gotta review all of the Ohio School Board Association guidance on all of this and Ohio Revised Code, make sure we're doing everything the right way. And so far, I think we have all of the questions answered about how we do all this. So me, Jerome and Marlena will have to be getting together and reviewing all this and interviewing people.
So is Jerome the president then?
No.
Scott.
Scott Gephardt is the current president. So come January, there'll be three of us. We'll have to appoint a president and a vice president out of the three of us. We can nominate ourselves too. So we could have three people nominating themselves to be president.
Then what happens?
That'd be pretty exciting.
We gotta vote.
What if y'all vote for yourself?
You got three, you three ones.
I know.
Only one way to find out.
Right, right. Fight it out, cage man style.
Yeah, we're gonna have to
We'll bring you on the podcast and we'll just do it that way.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All three of you. And we'll just figure out why Don select two had the best podcast.
Thank you, yeah.
You got a head start.
I love you so much. You're the best. You're so great.
Well.
But I think we'll, I think we'll be alright.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And thank you for having Chris on coming up. She's awesome. So thanks for making time for her.
She she's probably gonna get the harder hitting questions.
Um, from my point of view, those are hard questions. Uh, the finance stuff is difficult.
Right. Our our task is making it interesting because getting into numbers is tough for me just to listen to. And I hope the people listening or watching enjoy that. We might need to get her to be able to project her stuff up on the screen and be able to walk us through like she did during the meeting.
It's the Lego Batman movie. There's somebody when they start time, it's like numbers, numbers, numbers. I forget what movie that's from, but when sometimes that's what goes through my head is when I see all of this going on. So the the finance one oh one is something that we had really pushed for to dumb it down for people like me.
Oh, it's great. Now, Todd, did you have dreams when you came on here that you were gonna set a record for the longest podcast on the local exchange?
No, I just have a lot to talk about and I've had a lot of coffee this morning.
Oh, you you we we have broken through all the barriers that we had.
Not by a lot.
Not by a lot.
Not by a lot.
Okay.
Alright.
You've done you've done a very good job and we could we can continue to keep going.
Uh, I will do whatever you guys want. Your podcast.
We need to wrap this thing up. It's a holiday weekend. Get out there, get your Black Friday shopping done. Got the tip off classic tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, it will already be done by the time this gets out here, but go tribe. Hopefully they
Tribe. Hope you guys have a Merry Christmas or whatever you celebrate. So thank you.
Happy Hanukkah, whatever we're doing here. No, Merry Christmas to everybody. So it's it's already full time Christmas at my house, so.
And thanks for what you're doing here. I know you guys aren't getting paid for it. But um, I do wanna point out that you guys have a beautiful shop here. I happen to wear a custom made suit today and there is nothing quite like the feel of a custom made suit. How that fits on you. So I would encourage people to come by and
I could not agree more.
What you guys have done in here.
Well, thank you. We're gonna clip that and then we're gonna throw that over to our social media through Caliber and that is going to be our new post on Caliber. So I I appreciate your support there.
Field jacket right there is calling my name. That is gorgeous.
Hey, you should you should put that thing on. It feels great.
I might need to lose a little more weight. That mannequin looks a little more fit there.
Oh, no, no, that fits me.
Clip him in the back.
That fits me, so that'll fit you just fine. But alright, well, thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.